Good day, Eric. Okay. I'll call the meeting to order, and if I could have a roll call, please. Don Bunko. Joe Truman.
Here.
Grant Carnes.
Here.
Rich Erickson.
Here.
Tim Starmer.
Here.
Okay. Ask for a motion to approve the November twenty-second minutes? Or if there's any changes? Let... I've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, moving on to new business. I think before we start, we'll just... The audience here, we have Robert.
Robert Hardy with Arcadia Homes.
And Tom, you're the neighbor to the north, correct?
Tom Switzer, which is correct.
Which, and he lives directly north of the appeal. So... Appeal number one. Have a reading of public notice, please.
Appeal number one is a request by Brad Sekulic. For a two-foot, five-inch rear yard setback variance to add on to his existing home, and a fifteen-foot front yard setback variance to add on to his existing garage, located at seven-two-three-one Surfwood, Michigan, four-eight-four-three-zero, parcel ID number being four-seven-zero-four-three-zero-two-zero-two-zero-one-three. Property is owned R1, single-family residential. Reference Tyrone Township zoning ordinance number thirty-six, section twenty-point-oh-one, schedule of regulations inclusive of building setbacks, height, and Minoan lot width and lot area.
All right, thank you. Before we start the questions and the exclamation and definition of the request, I'm going to make a note and refuse myself from voting, as I have a personal friendship with these Sekulics. And not that I think it'll affect my decision. I don't want any misinterpretation. We still have a quorum with the other three members. They're all able to vote, so... That being said, Mr. Hardy, can we have a little...
Yeah, what...
Definition of what the request is about?
Yeah, what we're proposing is out the rear on the lake side, the two-and-a-half-foot variance. We're proposing to create a new master bedroom, bath suite for Brad and Rose. She's handicapped. I don't know if that comes into play or not, but I'm gonna throw that out there. They currently live in a two-story house. They bought this house because the fact that they're hoping to get this variance so they can create a one-floor handicap-accessible house with an enlarged... The reason why they had an enlarged garage on the front. Eventually, she's gonna need a handicap van for lifts. Right now, they're in a regular minivan where she can maneuver her weight in and out, but it's gonna happen eventually with MS that she's in a wheelchair, that she will be in a wheelchair, having to go up and down. You need more radius circumference ways to get around. Right now, a lot of the house is non-conforming on the lot right now because of the irregular shape of the lot. It doesn't meet the current zoning. At some point, it obviously might have the zoning because it was built here in the sixties. That's kind of where I stand. That's the whole crux of why we're requesting this variance.
Okay, thank you. Just I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comments. I think you can see pretty much on the master bedroom addition where the two-foot comes in, two-and-a-half feet.
The one corner still needs the fifty-foot quarter setback. At fifty-four-point-six, it's just that... Yeah, the forty-seven and a half.
And you're not making it any wider, just going straight with the lines that are already built there?
Correct, yeah.
The proposed, is that a concrete patio?
That is, yeah.
Will it have roof lines?
No, it's just, that's just a patio. There's no roof over there.
Just a slab?
Yep, slab.
And I don't know if you've seen this, but that lake line that they have there, that's a piling seawall. So that is the line. It's not gonna, it's not gonna, it's not gonna rose. It's not gonna get any more or any less.
No, I mean unless we have a massive flood.
Well, yeah, for sure, it would have to wash out.
Right, you don't wanna see that again.
No.
Yeah, when I originally, I asked Ross if I needed a variance for that. And being that that's an existing structure there, we're allowed to build on that.
As long as the footprint isn't changing.
Yeah, the footprint wasn't...
If you're not extending the...
Right.
If you're extending above the boundary of height, then that's one thing. But if it's within the permitted height and you're not changing the footprint, then yes.
The driveway, did you read at the end of the road?
Yes.
That's right. The road is right there. That's how it happens with me every time. There's probably more action.
Turn around with your tires.
I was waiting for this drive.
Item is, Ross, did we receive any, I see neighbors here, any other...
Personally, the only improved I received was from this gentleman here.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I guess I'll open it up to the public for any comments or questions or concerns, Tom?
I guess it's Mike, right?
Yes, sir.
I do better when I'm standing up.
Well, you are more than welcome.
I'm old enough to fall asleep when I'm sitting down. I'm not moving around, that's all guys. First of all, I want to really thank Ross Nicholson. He was very professional and very informative as a result of our brief meeting. I wasn't going to be here tonight under any circumstances. My plan was to leave before Washington DC to pick up my granddaughter from the American University, Christmas break and kind of thing, right? Covid struck. And my wife and I made a decision late Sunday night not to drive to DC. We worked on a flight plan for my granddaughter to get back. So we're anxious about her. She came into contact with some kids that had Covid severity situation. Right now, she's testing negative, but who knows? Couple days ago. So that was the decision we made, because my plan wasn't to be here. I didn't know this until Sunday night. So we had a kind of a neighborhood meeting at the house.
Okay.
And as a result of that, several questions came up. And in that meeting, Mike Laido...
He's on the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple doors down.
Yeah. Actually, yeah, your first is Stentz, then Laido.
Yeah.
Stentz is out of town, so it was difficult to communicate with him. And of course, his wife teaches, so, but our schedules didn't work. Mike and Monica were very strong about the parking issue and the extension of the garage, primarily because it limits the capacity of the driveway to hold cars. And as you, if you look at our site, it is extremely tight. If we're not careful, all of our garbage pickup has to back up all the way out of Surfwood. And that's a tricky back up because it's uphill and it's also...
It's curved.
It's curved. So the Laidos really were strong about that. And had they not been working, I'm sure Mike would have been here tonight. And Paul and Barb, they raised it, they read all this. And they're both working tonight as well. Their issue is, and I guess that's where my real questions are, the variance request, those areas were not staked. Apparently, there's a requirement that the, those areas need to be staked in order the neighbors can see exactly. Obviously, I know the two-and-a-half-foot, that would probably have been overkill to stake. I had my tape out there, the community, you know, that sort of thing. The driveway is another question, because there is a construction stake on my side. So I kind of know where that is. And I know where the, oh shoot, what is it called? Right away, where I don't have, I can use the property, but somebody else...
Easement.
The easement. I know where the easement ends on my property. But there's no stake on the other side. In other words, at the end of the driveway where that easement lay in.
Right.
There's absolutely no stake. So all of us non-engineers, we're trying to measure where that driveway would be and we, or where the garage extension would be. So we, that's a big question.
Right, right now, I don't want to harp, okay?
Oh, you'll go ahead.
Yeah, right, right now, the garage encroaches eight feet of that fifteen into the setback. So we're only, this hash mark is only seven feet pulling forward. You know that Japanese maple? That's off to the, between, it's just past that Japanese maple.
So when I see the construction, and I put my tape out, right?
Yep.
If I take the brick wall...
Come on, seven feet towards the road.
From the brick wall.
Yep.
And then that's seven feet, and it will come out straight.
Correct.
I'm gonna D one of those...
No, it'll be parallel with the existing front garage wall. So seven feet straight forward.
And that's what Ross told me. We were trying to figure out what that was all about and how we were looking, and we weren't very successful.
Yeah.
So I...
I dropped the ball on the staking. I had it in my calendar, just staked it a couple weeks ago. And once again, I dealt with the Covid situation in my family. And then this morning, I went, oh my God, I didn't stake this. So it did get staked this morning, but I know that doesn't do a lot of good unless you're driving by on your way to the meeting.
Well, we have, I've done some just put the stakes down. You're not open on Friday. Barb Hunsler raised the issue with me and Sean. And I said, oh, hell, I don't want to stake it. And I tried to call and closed. So that didn't happen. Today, I've been, I've been jam-packed. I'm retired, but I do have a philanthropic responsibility and I do a lot of work. And today, I spent the whole day with the health coalition. So ergo, no stake. I happen to be the realized chair of that operation. It just, it just wasn't possible. I'm not here to object to the variance.
I totally understand.
I'm here to ask some pertinent questions from my perspective. I believe, as the neighbors believe, that the screened-in porch that is now part of the construction was a screened-in porch. It truly was. But somehow, over time, it morphed into part of the construction, and now it becomes a footprint of the house. That's number one. And I see the existing addition over the patio becomes part of the house. So my concern is, we've got a concrete patio in the back, and I can understand why you'd wanna do that. But the next person that buys that house, that note becomes a footprint for more house. And we're kind of concerned that here we are, we're very happy, Adam. Brad is our neighbor.
Yeah, for sure.
And he and I share an ethnic background.
Yeah, they're good people.
If you notice the name, we share an ethnic background. So one Croatian can't be bad kind of other Croatian. That's a rule somewhere. But our concern, our concern, and question, would that concrete patio now and current regulations become part of the footprint and be able to be built upon?
If it isn't closed, as far as what the zoning ordinance defines it as, it is, any attached accessory structures are considered part of the overall structural footprint. So looking at it from a zoning perspective, attached deck, attached patio, if it's attached to the principal structure, it is now part of that footprint, and it is required to meet the principal structure setbacks.
But a patio isn't really attached?
If it is an enclosed patio, that is...
Right, would be...
Just from zoning perspective, not building code. Just from zoning perspective, as far as how our ordinance defined it, it's considered part of the structural footprint.
Okay.
So in other words, if this patio can be built over, the neck, the back patio can be built over.
Well, that...
Really pushes the setback issue and also push, I guess I'm saying, is there...
The one in the rear, is it enclosed? This is proposed, right?
The one right now, proposed contract.
Okay, so unless it's actually enclosed, then it's not. If it's above twelve inches from grade, then technically, yes, it's considered like a, an attached patio, but if it's just pavers or something like that, that's flush with ground less than twelve inches?
How is it gonna be built?
It's gonna be, well, it's gonna be built at grade because Rose has to get out. But it's not attached to the home because the orange, the concrete isn't anywhere secured to the house.
See, I think what he's saying, he's not asking for a variance here. That little bit right there doesn't require a variance. This does. This requires that two-and-a-half foot because it's structured. This is just a slab. And if they wanna build on that, they gotta come back for a variance.
They're right here. Yeah, but it's so easy because that's what's happening here.
But that was a deck, because that was secured to the house as a deck. So that's where the loophole, so to speak, in the zoning allows that to be built. This being just a concrete patio isn't secured to the foundation?
And this, but this isn't either. And you understand?
Well, that's a deck.
Right, so the deck was never really attached to the house. It was, you know, they made it over time, a screened-in porch, and now it's the footprint of the house. My concern is, not necessarily what's happening here. My concern is, what does the future look like? What does this board have, these rules and regulations? How are we gonna enforce these laws? I don't know. Because I don't want to create an issue, quite frankly.
I see your point.
Are there some caveats that could be included in this situation? So down the line, Brad sells the house, he's made some great improvements to it, and guess what? A new family moves in with two teenagers that shared the guest room, and now I've got four cars. And now I got a parking structure problem. And, you know, it just, everything goes crazy around there. So I guess I'm saying, are there some caveats? It can be memorialized? So this is it?
I don't know.
Not that I'm aware of. It's basically what's being proposed now is what's under consideration. As far as this rear patio, if that is an area of concern, if it's not above twelve inches from grade, if it is in reality just pavers, things like that?
It's gonna come up, right?
It's gonna have to come up to get her wheelchair out.
Right.
That one door.
So is it gonna come down?
But by the door, you mean?
Well, the whole, that whole concrete patio will be raised up to the same height as the existing first-floor range of the home.
But that, you're not actually proposing to go any further towards the lake than the existing footprint of the house?
Correct. And that's not an attached structure, it's just four inches of concrete. No, but it, it's just four inches of concrete.
So if someone came in for a land use permit and they wanted to add on to there, we would say, no, it requires a variance. They would need to go through the same process.
They just come back if they want to build it. Then we'd have to make a determination there.
Because it is, the neighbors in our little meeting, it was, oh my God, you mean the house is gonna be twenty-five feet from the lake? Where does that occur? That was the kind of reaction.
Oh.
Because, see, nobody really saw, when I got all this information, because I don't think there's any place for it, it's twenty-five feet from the lake.
Yeah, I mean, other than that existing deck, that existing deck is twenty-five point three feet now from, but now it's gonna have a wall on it and a roof over it.
Right. This is a lot to give, is what I'm saying in terms of the homeowner association and everything else. I don't, I don't mind it, I can live with it. What my question becomes is, is really what we want to do? This is an example, and I don't wanna go too far with it because I don't wanna create too many questions. But I'm not opposed, is what I'll tell you. These are the questions that, not Stentz, because we didn't really talk to him, but Mike and Monica and Paul and Barb raised. My wife said, Tom, let everything sit and just shut up.
No, that's a good question.
No, for sure.
My concern is like the parking, it sounds like there's a problem today, sometimes with parking.
Well, sometimes, it's a problem all the time.
Okay, so then, yeah, okay.
You see, with Bobby being there, she had one car, and it was normally in the garage. So it was never really an issue. But, and I understand that they need to have a bigger vehicle, and they probably wanna keep her in the garage. And that's probably a good excuse. But with a bigger vehicle outside of the garage? It's gonna create a bigger problem, because that driveway will not handle two cars wide.
Up near, up near the garage, it's probably sixteen wide. You know, I mean, they only had, I mean, in their defense, they only have one van. Obviously, Rose isn't driving, you know? So it's kind of the similar situation of what was there with the last old elderly person.
Two-bedroom house, right?
Yes. Right, but Brad's plan isn't to move all his contents to this place and put eighteen cars in the driveway. I think he's still keeping his Orinop place.
He's not on the directory, right? I tried to track him down, I wanted to chat with him last week, and I tried to find him. I exhausted the directory, he's not listed in the directory.
Yeah, he's keeping his Orinop house. And this is strictly for Rose to maneuver in whether it be five years, ten years, fifteen years. I don't know, I mean, only God knows that, you know? But the plan isn't to sell Orinop. You know, they also have their, Brad and Rose have their daughter that lives on Ledgewood, you know? So, I mean, they're good people. I guess if they were having a parking, and there was a million cars there, you could probably say, hey, you wanna dump some cars over at Orinop and show them back with the golf cart? Or dump some cars over at Anna and Joel's place on Ledgewood?
Yeah, most of us, I, we cooperate to a great extent. I've been to parties at Stentz, I've been to parties at Laido's. There's a lot of parking on the street. Well, yeah, but it is what it is. But I'm just looking at this, this extension to the garage, that, did I hear seven feet?
Seven feet.
Is that... So currently, the driveway is forty-two feet on the short side.
Correct.
And with this extension, it'll only be thirty-five feet.
Correct.
Can I park two cars end for end in thirty-five feet?
Full cars could.
Yeah, you're not getting, you're not getting two full-size pickups, no.
Can I park three cars in forty-two feet?
Little cars.
You could get two full-size...
See where I'm going? I'm not sure the seven feet is taken away parking from their driveway.
Yeah, that was what I was trying to do.
That's where I'm going with this.
Right, I have your thing, right. Forty-two and thirty-five still house two cars.
Exactly.
It's just with more space. Now you can walk between the bumpers.
So I'm like...
I just...
Now, if he was, if you were asking for ten feet or fifteen feet more, then I'd say, well, you just... Now I'm down to one car.
Mr. Chairman, that's what got everybody screwed up. I mean, Laidos got really into that with the parking.
Yeah, and as they should.
And really got, and that was a big issue. And then it got all of us, but when I talked to Ross, it was seven feet. But then we were trying to measure it, ergo, no stake.
Yep.
So that created me being here, and, you know, here we go. So I'll go back and think this through with the stakes, and I'll... You're not gonna tear them down, are you?
No, they're staying up now.
We lose sightline out of a couple of windows. We're willing, Sharon said, oh, what the hell. We have bedroom windows that are on our side, two of them, you know, on your side, the two-and-a-half feet knockout. And we also have a long window that overlooks the drive.
Okay.
And we have a second story that overlooks, that over the water. And that's there as well. So, you know, I'm willing to forego all that.
Yeah.
I'm just...
Well, I appreciate that.
I'm just here because, long range, I don't wanna have to come back here and stand out against another neighbor because of building over stuff. Because this is really, this is a very small house for a very small lot. And it creates a real problem. I mean, it's got no basement, it's...
No.
It's, I guess it's white with red.
Right, and we, I mean, I mean, we tried to tighten it up as much as we could to simplify just getting them the needs that they needed, you know? I mean, we're not asking for the, we're not asking for fifteen even in the front of the garage. We're asking for seven because that's what is gonna accommodate that handicap vehicle, you know? We're asking for ten, you know, we're still encompassing some of that master bath into that existing house.
I've got all my points done. I mean, it's more of a political thing about turning a screened-in porch into a, you know, part of the structure, but rules are the rules, right?
Yeah.
And turning a patio into part of the structure, rules are the rules.
Right.
And maybe, I don't know if there's ever a time down the road where you look at those rules.
That is something that is likely to be looked at. I mean, zoning ordinances are always changing. Currently, our zoning ordinance just says any attached accessory structures, which a deck, a raised patio above twelve inches, or an enclosed patio is considered an attached accessory structure, therefore, part of the principal structure footprint. It's possible that that may change in the future, but currently, that's just the way that it has been written.
Well, you know, I wanted to add, the plan of my house was to add, and I became frightened of the zoning, what's the committee in early?
Oh, the architectural committee.
Yeah, I got frightened with them. Because I have fifty-foot setbacks, right, for my house, and I wanted to push out my kitchen, basically. And I wanted to push out my, my kitchen, basically. And unofficially, I was told, are you kidding me?
Well, I don't think, I don't want a situation, if, if you get.
They have architectural control. They're actually a very strong committee, so they could go above and beyond what we require, not necessarily in terms of setbacks, but architectural design.
Right, I guess they could find a fault to it, to, to knock it down. But they, they can't knock it down specifically, let's say, one o, because the two and a half feet.
Right.
I mean, that.
Right, no, if the township grants the variance, then the township grants the variance.
I would go back and talk to my wife, I don't know if I will, tell her the fact that we could have pushed, gotten here to push the kitchen out.
Right. It's not too late.
It's still a great meeting, Robert.
No, this was, this was five years ago. I, I don't think that's gonna be a possibility. Yeah, so.
I guess was my only other question, has the, the association.
And to your comment, and to your comment, I would not necessarily, I mean, when I look at this, he's, this request is, is not extending any already non-conforming situation. Did I say that right? Did I make sense? It's already non-conforming, and although he's asking for more non-conformance, he's not making any non-conformity worse. Because he's already, he's, he's, he's already 25.3 on the one side and 30.20, 30 feet 20 on, on that one corner.
Yeah.
So he, it's already.
But see, he, could he have built, if, if that was, if that is the deck, the screened in porch, could it be that? Yeah, I guess mine is. Yeah, my, my deck is definitely closer to the water than my structure. Yeah, I see your point. On, on the, on the screened in porch, it's, it's part, it's shown as part of the structure.
Right.
That's, that's because it was a raised deck.
Yeah.
And you could walk from the house to the deck. And somebody down the road, I mean, Paul, you know, he says.
Paul, Paul Williams had, had, he wanted to go, go out and let it.
So, I mean, they, they put a roof over it, but that becomes part of the structure. And the only, yeah, I guess the garage is non-conforming already. And so we're going seven feet more non-conforming. And the long range is the patio, but given the circumstance, that's, that's just what it is. We're gonna have to come back and, I'll have to remind all of you, Brad sells the house and somebody wants to bump it again, and I'll say, hey, we, we're pretty strong about that patio, right? So then I'll have, I'll be angry with them. And then the, I think, yeah, but we're, we're, we're willing to cooperate on the line of site, the garage extension, and all the other things. I mean, I'm not gonna create a nasty situation. Because in order for me to turn around, for me to turn around when I'm towing my boat, I have to come up almost halfway into his driveway.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell him to open the door. You can back her in, do your driving if you need to do it.
Well, that's really why I can do it, because i- i- if you think about it, if, if I've got a 22 foot boat with my truck, that's a lot of space. And if I try, if I'm coming in straight, I'll never get into the turnaround of the hammerhead.
No.
And I'll never get into my driveway. So if he could, if he put up a wall on his driveway, I'd never be able to go home.
Right.
Or I have to back all the way down. I'd have to back all the way down so, which is crazy.
That would be a challenge.
I backed a long ways with that boat before, and I don't like to do it, and I don't keep it there very often, but when I do, I do. So that's part of the neighborhood cooperation. The other problem is, with that driveway is set, there's no street parking because of the driveway. It takes away at least two spots on the street because, and you can't get a car in there. So it's kind of like no parking for about a couple of spots to keep. And that'll, I think that's what, with the handicap van, that will also fo, that will also force more, less street parking, because he'll have to get in and out with that van.
Right, absolutely.
You, you know what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah.
Because he'll not be able to.
Right.
So there is, if, if the parking on the street is, let him know, that, that really is an issue.
Sure.
So I, I think he's got to be aware of that, just as a neighbor. It's easier for you to.
Yeah, I, I can let him know.
And be straight up.
I guess if, if, just keep in, bear in mind, if we do get this variance and we have to do this, it's gonna be a little messy for parking while we're doing it, because we're gonna have trade trucks.
I need a contractor.
I know.
So my granddaughter's graduation party will be hosted in June, we'll talk about that.
Sure.
Because you'll be under construction by then.
We will. But we'll make sure she's all pretty, done, tidied up for you.
Well, that'll be that as long as it's not, stop on YouTube.
Uh, yeah, I live on, I live on like Janet as well.
Oh my gosh.
So I'm from.
Okay, yeah.
So that, that leads to my next question, has the Lake Association reviewed this?
They have not.
Feedback or?
They, they have not. We came here first.
Okay. All right.
So they, they moved over now?
Well, yeah, they, they, they have to for us to get a land use permit, a building permit.
Sounds like if he lives there, he knows, but it's good to make a point of it in our meeting that.
Yeah, absolutely.
That you have to have that.
Yeah, oh, I, I understand, yeah.
See, I would, the other way, I put a dormer, a bigger dorm, another room, and I did the Lake Association first. I did the architectural drawings and Lake Association event. It was, I didn't need variance, so I ended up just giving permits. So I get two bites out of the apple and be able to.
Who did you report that bite to?
Uh huh. The, well, that's not a meeting. Let's just drop off the plans to Steve Dumas, unless we're doing them. Okay, so.
All right, any more, any written correspondence else from outside? No.
No received.
Okay. Any other questions from you guys? You're all.
Just a thing on the sightlines, it gets kind of, it's some challenges with this planning mission, right? What, what expectation is there and all that kind of thing? So that this one, it doesn't, sometimes that comes into play with setbacks, right?
Right.
In this situation, I would feel it does, with a reasonable expectation of sightline.
So. Per our ordinance, we consider sightlines when extending in the rear yard, not the front yard, it's specific to rear yard.
Yeah.
So anything in the rear yard, technically setbacks or sightlines could be considered in the front yard, our ordinance does not say anything about that.
Yeah.
That being said, we're gonna start the discussion at the planning commission level tomorrow.
Yeah, so. Yeah, just a comment on this lot, I noticed it's heavily wooded.
Yeah.
Looks like kind of towards the lakeside anyway. Just a point on that.
Mentioned.
All right, I guess we'll, uh, close the, uh, the comment period and I'll bring it back to the board for consideration of an action.
Oh my God. Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion to approve the two foot, five inch rear yard setback in the 15 foot's front yard. We have a vote, Ross, please?
Yes. Don Booker, Joe Troman.
Yes.
Greg Cards.
I've seen.
Richard Erickson.
Yes.
Tim Scarborough.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, there we go.
Thank you.
Thanks for your feedback.
Yeah, thank you, Tom.
It's good to hear.
Yep.
I don't want to be a wreck, bro.
And I'm, and I'm glad you guys all talked to Mike and I wish that's where, where you end.
Yeah, well, Stens, I, I tried to get ahold of him when he left. I don't know if he went to consider wherever, but it was gone. I did hear from Paul and Barb and, you know, that's just the way it was. Nice, nice family, yeah, nice family, nice.
Yeah.
Doesn't really have a safe harbor.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Very good, Robert.
Yep.
Thanks, you guys.
Thanks for getting that part though.
Yeah, yeah, it was part of about 10:30, 10:45.
As soon as they make that move. Anything, any miscellaneous things you guys want to talk about?
According to the plan.
Sounds like you guys are gonna be talking about sightlines after planning?
Yeah, we. I was coming out the, like, the hyperfastest route we could ever come up, right?
I was over by out there located.
We did quite a few. It was working in this format, it's crazy still.
I was doing with the, what's already existing, yeah.
But then there's. And then they come.
Right.
This is very. Yeah, no, that would be the need.
Well, I don't know.
I mean, because the regulator.
What, what, the other, what other town?
So you get.
Hey, it's big as you.
Yeah, I mean, the owners probably, they're, they probably spot the variant, they know where that is, but it didn't really affect what we needed for the variant. We didn't, we had, because we're just pulling seven.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I just kind of jumped into it.
Well, we're just, yeah, we're just doing miscellaneous business.
Okay.
I think we're all set. Rich was just filling us in a little bit on the sightline.
Yes, feel free to come. If you, if you have nothing going on, feel free.
I am concerned about it. I just brought that.
Yeah, I. That's gonna be our very first kind of official introduction into it, we're just gonna start talking.
In the way the zoning is.
Tomorrow evening at 7:00.
All right, is there anything else? Anything pending that you know of about that?
Never.
So January's, please, like.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully.
Yep, good. All right, well, adjourn the meeting.
Good night. Have a good night.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
It's, it's better than the board meetings that I've been used to in my life.
Yeah, yeah. Some could be, yeah.
I was the superintendent for 48.